Mr. Mills?
Here.
Mr. Magrino?
Here.
Ms. Corble?
Here.
And Ms. Peters?
Here.
Can I get a motion or are there any comments on the June 12th meeting minutes?
There is one mistake under approval of minutes. It says that Mr. Corble moved that the May Planning Commission meeting minutes be approved, but I was not here, so.
I made the motion, Mark, instead of.
This is Mrs. Corble, too, otherwise.
I figured the mister was right, the Corble was wrong.
Any other comments to the minutes? Hearing none, can I get a motion to approve subject to the change?
I'll make a motion that the minutes from the June 12th Planning Commission meeting be approved with a correction.
Second? All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, any public comment on items not on the agenda? Hearing none.
Yeah, there is one.
Not on the agenda?
Not on the agenda.
Please come up, introduce yourself.
Okay. My name is Andy Swick. I live at 644 East McMurray.
Okay.
In the back of my house, there was a small, when we first lived there, we've been there 40 years, there was a small creek running through the back. And as there was building going on all around, I think when they added, which one up by, that's right up there by, off of Bebott, right up in the corner there?
Okay.
I forget the name of that plan, Bittersweet.
Bittersweet.
They added Bittersweet. And I don't think there was a proper study done on where the water goes. That, the drainage from there, the problem I have is that that little creek, when it started, I could easily step over it. Now, it's over four feet wide and about three feet deep. There's all kind of construction material showing up in there. I think they used this through in a creek at the beginning, and then as the rains came and the drainage from Bittersweet pushed it down range. So, I don't know if anything can be done or a study can be made about it, but my fear is that in Bethel Park, they're building a big plan back right next to the senior home in Bethel Park.
Okay.
Where is the drainage from that gonna go? I think it's gonna go down through the same creek in the same tributary that goes in the back of my house.
All right, well, that's something Mark can put on, Mark's the planning director, can take a look at for you.
What I'll do is I'll get with our township engineer and talk to them about the situation. And if you don't mind putting your contact information on that sheet of paper on the other podium.
Okay, sure.
And then we can reach out to you.
Okay.
We have more information.
Thank you, sure.
Thank you.
Is there a pen up there?
Yeah.
Okay, perfect.
So, next on the agenda, new business is 640 East McMurray Multi-Family Residence Plan.
Yes, what you have before you is a land development plan. We are looking for some form of decision tonight. You would be making either approval or denial or tabling of this plan. The plan is located at 640 East McMurray Road. The site is a one-acre parcel currently used as a single-family home. Adjacent uses around the site are generally single-family as well, both to the north, west, and east. However, to the south, you do have some commercial development along East McMurray. And just to orient everyone, let's see if this works. This here, where I'm pointing, this is East McMurray, and we're sitting somewhere down here to the south of this site. There is some natural features to this site, as the gentleman just noted earlier. We do have a stream or drainage channel that runs through the site roughly through here and the low point of the site, and it is roughly right in there. So, you have a gentle slope heading down towards there, and then it goes back up. So, in terms of what's being proposed, this is really the conversion of the existing single-family home to a multi-family residence. It'll be a multi-family residence that houses only two dwelling units. In addition to that, one change that you definitely would see would be the creation of six parking spaces. They're looking to designate two parking spaces in the rear on existing pavement. And what is unclear about this plan is whether or not they're widening the driveway, but they are designating three parking spaces roughly here in front of the structure. And then they're also proposing that the garage space is the remaining required parking space. In terms of reviewing the plan, we just did issue a review letter. There are a number of technical deficiencies of the plan, mostly just notes that needed to be added, as well as some other items that needed to be put on the plan, such as contour lines, that sort of thing. But where we did have some planned deficiencies are centered mainly around the parking itself. That drive aisle adjacent to those three parking spaces being created up front needs to be wider, it needs to be 24 feet in width. Each of the parking stalls needs to be at least 10 feet by 20. I believe they're measuring nine feet in width. And the other item that we require is that there needs to be a five-foot planted area around the parking area that's out front. So, based on that information, and in many cases the lack thereof, we are not necessarily saying that we can issue a recommendation, but maybe the plan should be tabled. However, if the developer does provide some additional comments, or you're satisfied with the comments that I provided, you could make a conditional approval, and that would be based upon this one condition down here, which is resolving all the nine, 10 comments in my comment letter from July 1st. And that's all I had on this plan. I'm not sure if there's anyone representing the developer out there at the moment.
Anybody here for the developer? Would that require a highway occupancy permit?
No, it's because they're using the same location for the driveway, and it's still gonna be a low-volume driveway, they do not need one.
Okay.
If we table it, what's the timetable? We have to.
You easily have another, you can do it at the next meeting or even the meeting after that. So, we have 90 days starting today.
When did the letter go out with the comments?
The first?
The letter went out on the first. I'm not sure if they actually got them yet, because I have not heard back from them.
So, they knew the meeting was today, right?
They knew the meeting was today, yes.
But since you wrote, as you indicated, they have not responded to your letter, so they're.
No, like I said, I'm not sure if they've got them or not, or why they're not responding.
It's questionable whether they're taking any action on.
Right.
The action of the items.
Correct.
Hearing no developer, any audience comments on it? We can start over here on the right.
Me?
If you have, if you'd like, please introduce yourself.
My name's Philip Ross.
Come up to.
I'm up to the podium.
Up here, over here.
Right here, then you can write your information.
My name's Philip Ross. I'm a resident at 642, right next to the property. I believe, let me back up a little bit. This all started with the 2022 vision that we had for Peters Township in terms of the mixed residential or the situation that we're in. And let me slow down a second here. The intent of the plan was to have a uniform mixed residential housing community in a town center area, very similar to like a Dublin, Ohio, if you're familiar with that, possibly a Mount Lebanon kind of, Oklahoma, something as such. But as a result of that, our area was resold, some of it, I believe, commercial across the street from us. Was that residential as well?
Just mixed residential.
And that's part of my argument, which I'm not jumping in on that, but.
Okay. But as a result of that plan, then some zoning changes occur. Now, what's happening next to this, next to us or in our neighborhood, is that they're taking an existing single-family home, fixing up the basement, and utilizing the zoning changes to enable that to happen. But if we go back to the original plan, I don't believe that was ever the intent. The intent, and if I have these drawings and whatnot, if you're looking at it coming from McMurray, you have buildings and commerce and nice and new and all this jazz, but basically they're just asking to take a single-family home, they could take my single-family home and just convert these into multi-family units. I don't really think that was the intent of the whole thing. So, by allowing that to happen, basically, it would, it would counter what was trying to be accomplished. You have a bunch of standalone disparaged housing that might have a couple families here, three families here, if this type of thing were allowed to happen and to happen to these single-family zones or single-family homes that are in that zoned area. So, I guess what I'm asking is to stop this, relook at that zoning and go, what are we trying to do here? You know, what is this? Are we going to do something with the middle school? Is this going to be a town center? When this all started, it was basically, hey, we'd like to look at the back of your property, and they had drawings with single-family homes, small ones, multi-unit residential buildings. But really, none of that has occurred. The only thing that has occurred is someone purchased acre property around all of us, and they want to turn it into a multi-family home that was traditionally a single-family home, and it's not really accomplishing what was to be accomplished in this area. So, I guess I'm asking for it to stop, and then I would like to know the process for zoning changes to protect the residents and not favor one person and protect all the people that this is affecting. So, hopefully that made a little bit of sense.
And don't forget to put your name and address.
Got it. Any questions for me? If that was unclear, or would you like me to clarify anything, or did I not articulate it properly?
No, you did great. And you're right in that, you know, in this township and council, so you're aware, it's the school district that's holding up the development, too. That middle school was supposed to be converted to the intent of that zoning district. Unfortunately, they're putting the AIU there or something else, so. I don't think that was the intent of, you know, that zoning district, so. And I agree with you, the Dublin, Ohio, that was the vision back then, and it's not converting old houses into duplexes or whatever they're trying to do there.
Sounds like I articulated that in some way.
Yeah, you did a great job.
Okay.
Thank you.
And just to add to what Mr. Ross had said, he had asked about the process for rezoning.
Yeah, please.
One of the things, and you know this, Mr. Ross, we've talked about this on a Saturday Tuesday, at the steering committee meeting, we are doing our comprehensive plan update, and that's the perfect time to bring in these comments from the public to then address certain aspects of that plan, such as what does the future land use look like in certain areas of the township, as well as what zoning changes should be considered over the next few years. So, I would encourage everyone to get involved with that process, and also note, we do have access to some of the different information related to that process on our website if you search comprehensive plan.
I'm right across the street from 630.
Sir, please come on.
No, not along, Pete. I'm right across the street from this property, 637 East McMurray. Pete Rostowski, and I've been there 24 years. All right, 2000, when we bought that place. And, you know, I was gonna comment about what you was saying. Will we be notified that you're gonna be in the process of, you know, getting together on this, to, what do you want to do with that property, like on the other, on my side and on your side? What I understood, like he said, that was about three years ago, it was supposed to be, on their side, started by that property first and turn it into like a town center with, you know, single families, and I think even like retirement homes and stuff down, and put like a little community center down in there, then across, then they were gonna use our property, all right, which I never thought in a million years that would ever happen, but I mean, now you said there's a tie-up with the, with the school right now that they have it on hold? Is that, is that.
Well, there is not, when they were supposed to be willing to sell that property for development, they were just sitting on it.
And so, there's nothing to get excited about that right now at this point? I mean.
Unless they sell it to a commercial developer, which they can make a lot of money for, and to put the property back in the tax rolls, too.
Okay, so there's no, like, no.
Probably talk to the school board.
Okay. But like you said, like, let us, you said if there's something that's gonna transpire, will we know? Will we get a letter in the mail or something like that?
So, there's a couple of things with, for example, the comp plan, we have a lot of our news on our, on the website itself. But what you're, I think, maybe referring to are when there's land developments coming in or zoning changes.
Yeah, yes.
We're required to, for the zoning changes, we are required to notify all the affected property owners, and it's a township policy when it comes to land developments or subdivisions to notify everyone that's affected, as well as within 600 feet of that property.
Okay. All right. And I don't know who I talked to, this is probably about a year or two ago I talked about, because my mother-in-law, she, well, both, even my father-in-law, they live in Connecticut, and he's not doing too good, and we were looking to do like one of those nanny pods, and we got turned down, like you said, because I guess years ago, someone proposed that even your, like a trailer, a camper, you're not even allowed to have parked. And I'm thinking, that's like, we're living, this is Peters. I mean, I don't see why not, you can have a camper in your, you know, but then I says, if you're allowed to have camper, I was thinking about like a nanny pod in the back for my mother-in-law, you know, and he said, you know, you're not allowed to do that in Peters, which I understand, that's okay. So, then, oh, this starts transpiring on this property right now. It's a, it's a single unit, and now, I don't want it to devalue our property because of that. I mean, that's my problem right now. I feel like by doing something like this, because if you look at the house, it is not a very, there's no rhyme or reason on how they built this house. And I still want it to look like it's some kind of office place. I was worried about they're gonna rent that out to an office or some kind of professional business down below and use it as an office down there, because I understand that they eliminated the stairs going upstairs to that, from the basement to the first floor, they eliminated that. So, I'm thinking, you know, why wouldn't you turn it into an office? I don't think, I don't want, you know, business people to be coming right there in front of my house right there. That was my concern.
Mark, can you do me a favor? Is there any way you could put up the zoning map, what we were looking in the back at, just so people could see? Because some of these lots are slightly differently zoned than others, and they're right next to each other. I think it'd give you a good idea on what your property's owned.
You know what this is? Let me just grab some maps here.
Can I ask a question?
Please come in, sir. Do not, you gotta come up here and talk. Introduce yourself.
My name is Rob Stolz, 641 East McMurray Road. What did the people who have done the remodeling, what did they need to get approved so far?
They need to get approved.
Now, what did they need to do so far already? History? They've remodeled, been remodeling for over a year.
So, the way they approached it is they went and got a building permit, and that building permit was for remodeling of a single-family home.
It was, do we know, is that what they did?
Yes, that is, well, they remodeled it, but they remodeled it into a two-family unit. They did it basically backwards.
So, did they follow the building permit that was issued?
No. That's what kind of kicked us into this process of, well, if you want to go down the route of being a two-family unit, you need to get first approval from the Planning Commission.
And no one's here representing them.
Correct.
To hear our concerns.
Correct.
I can't help myself. And they currently have the lower portion listed for rent.
Yes.
Even though that we're here right now.
They currently do not have.
Actively trying to rent that.
They currently do not have a occupancy permit for any of that at the moment.
Is there anyone living in the property?
There's people living there.
Yes, people living there, they have stairs, doesn't it?
They moved in last week. They're nice people.
Hold on, ma'am, I'm trying to explain something.
Oh, I'm sorry.
They're not supposed to, I would put it that way.
So, Mark, can you explain what the town center zoning is, and then what those additional lots in red are zone?
Sure, just to kind of, I'm gonna try and orient everyone here real quickly. The white areas here, the lines, these are representing the streets. You know, I said they were labeled, but regardless, this area right here is the intersection of Valley Brook and East McMurray. East McMurray runs north here, right by the township building through the town center, and then right about there where I'm at is the proposed multi-family unit. So, this area right here is what some call a mixed residential area.
Do you have a definition of that, if you could?
It allows a mix of residential types, single-family homes, townhomes, multi-family, those type of uses.
So, residential only? Residential only.
Residential only.
Businesses.
I do not believe businesses are permitted in that.
Okay.
The town center, on the other hand, is more commercially, commercial oriented, allows most commercial uses, but it also does allow some residential uses, such as multi-family as well.
Okay. So, currently, assuming this gentleman's plan was correct, and they met all the requirements, it'd be, it's a permitted use what they're doing?
Correct. But he's got to meet those conditions that I noted in my review letter.
Okay. All right, ma'am, you wanna come up, introduce yourself, please?
Yes. My name is Sarah Summer, and I've been a long time township resident, and I live across the street from this.
Okay.
So, they have the backyard view, I have the front yard view of what's going on.
Okay.
I have limited experience, but as I've watched this, I can't see how they're following any construction. I'm not looking from a zoning point of view, I'm looking from what the heck's going on. I mean, the roof was tarped for like three years, and I saw them have like roofing bids, if I'm assuming that.
Okay.
And it was never done, and it's still, on one edge, is still not done. So, I can't imagine that single-family duplex, whatever, it's very poorly being supervised, very poorly being handled. The parking spaces, they're not really definitive. It's like, well, I guess if I park my car here, that's a parking space. And then they've got a trailer, and as Phil has said, he can see from the back, he was telling me there's like junk back there. It's not a well-supervised subcontracting, and I think the biggest argument for me right now is they're not here. So, why should you graciously say, hey, that's okay, we've got these people who really care about their homes and what's going on coming to this meeting? And I know it's only one meeting, but it's their investment that they're throwing away. But they're puddle jumping over this, like, well, we'll just rent it, and then we'll, we'll deal with that later. Well, later is now.
Well, correct me if I'm wrong, Mark, they cannot rent this right now unless they just do a single-family residence.
At most, they could rent it for one unit.
For one unit.
But they definitely cannot rent it for two units.
And I don't know.
But they don't have any certificate of occupancy for either.
Okay.
Well, there was a lot of activity.
They have a certificate of occupancy, right?
Right.
Not to talk over people. There was a lot of activity over there over the Fourth of July, and they just kind of moved in. I don't know if you guys can concur with that, but that's what happened. And then they have a white, they have a white, big, long trailer that's just sitting there. I mean, it's half-construction, but they're not doing what is even required to have an occupancy permit, the little bit that I do know. And the roof especially.
Ma'am, all of your questions or comments are really good, but I would notify the township staff directly on these issues, because that's more building issues and code violations.
Okay.
That probably our building inspector should be notified.
And our building, I will note, our building inspector was out about a month ago, which is what started this whole process, a little more than a month ago.
Okay, I didn't know what the process was, but.
And they've been out to the site a number of times, and there has been a couple of stop work orders issued at different points as well.
Well, I think you've got a real pile of problems.
This has been going on for, yes. It's been a problem for us.
So, just for awareness, if they are living there without an occupancy permit, what is the outcome of that?
We essentially have to take the, first, we cite the property owner, which is just a notice, letting him know that, you know, if you don't have everyone leave the property, we are gonna take it to the district magistrate. Goes to the district magistrate, he starts issuing fines. If that doesn't work, then we take it to the court of common pleas. But again, that's just issuing them more fines. I'm not sure if the judge, either the magistrate or the judge, can force people or convict people essentially. I'm not sure how that process works.
But there is a process of some kind.
There is a process if you're violating our ordinances, and there's fines associated with it.
And that process begins with.
With the planning department. Yes.
And Mark, this isn't a commercial, so this would have been a recommendation to council?
No, this would still be a site plan, so it's still approval for a planning commission.
Okay. That's what you're saying.
Anybody else in the audience?
Yeah.
Come on up, sir.
No one has.
I just wrote a short letter, if you don't want to put anybody to sleep. According to the comprehensive plan of 2022, and the paragraph I'm referring to is emphasize housing choice and diversity, and it was on page 39. It's titled "Density." Higher density does not necessarily translate to apartments or rental units. Smaller single-family homes, such as cottage-style or patio homes, afford an option while retaining single-family appeal. Other alternatives include mixed-use developments or aging-in-place communities that offer a variety of residential choices, and I'm aging in place very well. The house Mr. Crean purchased included a grandpa flat. It was a single-family residence. The gentleman living there was family, not a renter. The subject building at 640 East McMurray Road was always a single-family residence. It should stay that way. It was constructed originally as a single-family house, not an apartment building or a multi-unit boarding house. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Just questions?
Oh, please come up, ma'am, in the back.
Hi, I'm Carol Conchar, and I live at 646 East McMurray Road. We've been there for, I was just adding it up, my daughter was 14 when we bought the place, and she's 44 now, so 30 years. And we love it. We love, we have the two acres and peaceful and everything. But I just happened to hear one of you mention, because I'm in the back, I wasn't really, I was listening, but, you know, kind of, I heard somebody say something about the middle school. It's been sitting there. Is there anyone going to school?
It's a school board decision.
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah.
I just wanted to know.
But it's zoned in that blue area, so it could be any of the uses that our planning director talked about. So, that could become.
Apartment building.
Apartment building, it could become commercial development, so long as they get all their approvals, but the school district has not sold it.
From what I heard, but of course, everyone talks, and you don't know, nobody always knows everything, what, from what I heard was they stopped using that because it was undermined and never had.
I think there was a time of that, correct?
Yeah, I remember that. That was a while ago.
Yeah.
So, if it's undermined.
But they moved all the kids from that building to the other.
Yeah, I know. I'm glad, because you never know. But I just wondered if it actually is undermined.
Somebody would have to come in there and figure out how they fix it.
They have to make it stay.
Yeah, absolutely.
That was my concern.
Yeah, they would if they ever sold it, if they were doing that.
Yeah, if they put, you know, senior living center there, they better, you know.
They could put something just like, that town center, the other senior living center is part of that state zoning.
Yeah.
On the other side of Hyslers.
So, that's all, I just, do I write my name?
Yeah, just write your name and address, please.
Thank you.
Any commissioner thoughts on this?
I've not read the code relative to the mixed use in this mixed residential overlay district. It does appear that this was not the intent of, in my opinion, the conversion of single-family homes into, you know, two units. Especially when you have like a, you know, it's essentially a basement unit. I think there's a lot of that going on more in the city. I think that's also caused some issues there. I don't see a reason to set a precedence for this. That's more my opinion, although. I don't see a reason to set a precedence for this. That's more my opinion, although I have not read, whether it's by right or permitted or have you. That's just my opinion. I don't see the need for this to be in this location.
It sounds like they're in violation of our current zoning ordinance and possibly our building code. I don't see why we would be inclined to provide benefit to somebody in that position.
Right, particularly with not even coming here to make their case tonight. There's all these residents here to come with their cases. They're not here. They're in violation of a variety of things. I agree totally with Rob, but we should set the precedent.
Sure. Yeah, based on the lack of information, representation, and the possibility that it's in violation of more than just one code, and especially for the residents that did show up at the meeting to state their case, I hereby make a motion that we deny the multifamily residence plan on 640 East McMurray Road.
Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
But we'll still follow through, Mark, on the follow-up, to get your, all the issues and the occupancies.
They can always resubmit again.
They'd have to resubmit with them.
But they can also be...
Sounds like they violated the occupants. They haven't had an occupancy permit.
We have to follow up on that.
How can they have people living there without an occupancy?
There's a code enforcement issue that we need to deal with, yes.
I have a question.
Mr. Holton?
Yes.
Sir, is there any chance of, I call it the brighter yellow area adjacent to the blue, just revert back to residential, the zoning?
That is...
I don't see any, I don't see any issue of having it as it is now, multi-use or whatever. There's no use to it.
We could certainly do that, especially as part of the comprehensive plan process. So what I recommend is, there is a survey available on the website, and there's some open-ended questions in there. And I would recommend entering information like that. And also, if you want to just write something to me or myself, my contact info is on the website as well. And then I can add that into wherever the public engagement, wherever seems applicable, so that it, you know, it gets heard.
Thank you.
And so there's two of us on the planning commission who are on the steering committee, the two of us right here. So I'll make some notes, and I'm sure we will as well, to take a look at this specific area again. So thank you for bringing that to our attention. And we did have a steering committee meeting on Tuesday of this week, and then that survey. And then there's also a mapping, there's a mapping thing you can do online, you can make a note of that. Yeah, right. And so that's, we'll come back again. Now, that does take a process. It's not as if we can rezone it next month, or rezone it like that. So it will take a little bit of a process, but this is a good one for us to know about and to consider, because that's part of what we're doing, is looking at different pockets in the township itself, not only just vacant land, but where we, you know, where we have existing development and determining for the future, for the next 10 to 15 years, what do, how do we want to see that change or move forward? Because obviously, we can't stop all development, but we can also, we can try and look at things and see if it doesn't fit the community of where we stand. And I think what everybody said here today is that when the vision was for the middle school to be sold, and that, you know, probably to be raised, and then have a little community center or something, that made sense at the time. But if conditions have changed. But it does take some time, though, unfortunately. It's not something that's going to get done in a few months, right?
Well, like you said, as long as the truck is getting, and after it.
The other thing, Mark, I'd like to explain to the audience, we denied, but tell the audience what the developer could do.
The developer can always come back and resubmit at any time.
Just so you're aware.
And just...
This may not be over soon.
And just like before, we will send letters out with the correct time and date for the meetings again.
Okay.
And just so you are aware, too, is where we sit with this right now, it is zoned a particular way at the moment. So if they meet, you know, because there's the zoning ordinance, there's the MPC. If they meet every condition in there based upon the current zoning when they file the application, if they meet everything, we can't just deny it, just to deny it because we don't like it. They have to meet every standard, but if they do, it becomes what's called a permitted use, and that's what they're looking for. And then we're kind of, we can only enforce what's on the books already, right? Just so that you kind of know where our jurisdiction is at this point as well.
Yeah, what can we do immediately, like starting now?
Should they meet the demands and...
We've done it tonight. You've let several people know, and we've...
And they continue to keep in touch.
But I think the building stuff going on right now is big, that making sure enforcement's on them.
Thank you very much.
Mark, anything else on the agenda?
Yeah, that's all I have.
All right. Meeting adjourned.